Everybody, get your attention. If you please stand for the council prayer followed by the pledge of allegiance. Dear God, bless our proceedings tonight, give us wisdom to know what is just and the strength to do what is right. Amen? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. We have approval in the minutes.
So moved.
Have a motion second, voting to approve the minutes with Councilor Crowe.
Aye, yes.
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 Minutes approved. Proclaimations and statements by the mayor and council, since Mayor Maddox is not here tonight, I'd ask Caramo Drake, Caramo, if you'll please come and join me? Which is, you, all your sides are good, do you want to stay on that side? In 2014, Tuscaloosa Bills was initiated as a proactive response by former council president Harrison Taylor to manage the allocation of federal funds received in the aftermath of the 2011 tornado that severely impacted the city of Tuscaloosa. Over the years, Tuscaloosa Bills evolved into a comprehensive business opportunity program dedicated to supporting disadvantaged business enterprises. And whereas, in celebration of the 10-year anniversary of Tuscaloosa Bills, the city of Tuscaloosa relaunches Tuscaloosa Bills as Tuscaloosa's Business Opportunity Program. In order to better reflect the program's expanded scope and mission, and whereas the city of Tuscaloosa also celebrates the 10-year anniversary with the creation of the inclusive multi-industrial partnerships, Advancing Commerce in Tuscaloosa, also known as Impact Coalition, this coalition is formed to continue to break down barriers to economic prosperity, coordinate, advocate, and educate for and with on behalf of the city's diverse businesses. Now therefore, on behalf of Mayor Maddox and the city council, do by recognize Tuscaloosa's Business Opportunity Program encourage citizens to join me in celebrating its 10-year anniversary. Caramo?
Thank you. If you will, some of the coalition members are here with me. If you're part of Impact, would you please stand? We want you to know what to expect from Tuscaloosa's Business Opportunity Program. This coalition will intentionally cultivate the entrepreneurial ecosystem to help make Tuscaloosa's diverse business community thrive. And thank you.
Thank you. There we are. Thank you. Raven came in, Councilor Howard came in, thought that was applause for her entering the room.
It was one.
It was, right? Okay, at this, at this time, I'll turn it over to Councilor Colonel Lee Busby.
your kids, please bring your kids out to the Kids Gauntlet. Hey, I do have an announcement, it should take exactly two minutes and nine seconds altogether, but we have the video queued. If you're not feeling completely sane and balanced this weekend, please come out to If that's too martial for you or your kids, please bring your kids out to the Kids Gauntlet. Sokal Park on Saturday morning and run the Tuscaloosa Gauntlet Race with us. So if you're, again, not feeling completely sane and balanced this weekend, and you're athletically fit and mentally tough, please come out and join us at Powell Pavilion at Sokal Park for the Tuscaloosa Gauntlet. A packet pickup is Friday afternoon from four to seven at the District Room on 20th Avenue next to Ennis Free. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Councilman Busby. I know it's an incredible amount of work by you and your great team, and thank Visit Tuscaloosa for their help is what, is what they do as well, so.
The proceeds benefit the veterans of Alabama, and that's why it does certainly have a camouflage tent to it.
That's great, thank you. Okay, welcome to the city council meeting on this Tuesday, March 19th. We will start with agenda item comments by citizens. Clerk?
We've got three citizens signed up to speak. Our first is going to be Loretta Lynn.
If you'll state your name and address for the record, please.
My name is Loretta Lynn, 1223 36th Avenue East in Tuscaloosa, over in Mr. Tyner's district. I'm here tonight to urge the city council to preserve the pedestrian bridge that stretches across Veteran Memorial Highway from District Five to District Six. We, as our sort of unofficial citizens' bridge committee, have tried to make this easy on you all and selected a few speakers, but we do have other people, constituents, residents from Districts Five and Six, if you all would just stand up for a minute to show your support of the bridge. Thank you so much. The bridge is one of the safe, the few safe means of connecting pedestrians to other neighborhoods. We have parents pushing strollers, bike riders, dog walkers, veterans from the Arcadia side who access medical care and do not have vehicles that rely on the bridge to walk across to get their care from the VA hospital. Demolition would leave about a mile, maybe a little bit more, maybe a little bit less stretch of Veterans Memorial without a pedestrian crosswalk. This is a very busy, very dangerous area, there are not sidewalks, so it's a big concern for us, not just recreationally, but for our people in our community who don't have access to vehicles and rely on that. I know that as I've talked to some, and some of us have talked to our council members, there's a study that has been cited, and that study has said that only about 30 people a month use the bridge. That data count is likely inaccurate and unreliable. The counters do not appear to have been maintained and do not appear to be functioning properly. Additionally, the sensors are not located to accurately capture all of the pedestrian use, they're only working on the south end of the bridge, they're not located on the north end of the bridge. The north end of the pedestrian bridge can be and is actively used to travel from Arcadia across the railroad tracks to the north side of Veterans, and the existing counters don't capture any of this pedestrian traffic. You know, hence our concern about the reliability of that study. Anecdotally, we know from meeting with our neighbors and having two rallies to save the bridge over the last few weeks, that people, that, I mean, more people than 30 are using this on a regular basis. Last night alone, we had close to 30 people who were rallying and demonstrating and waving to, you know, ongoing traffic to say, you know, support the bridge, and some people just walked across who didn't even know about the rally, but were just using it to go by. Like, one woman was on a bike, another family was pushing stroller, so we do not believe that that 30 count is estimate. The bridge is structurally safe, there is no study saying otherwise. There's no discernible movement or instability, there are no visible cracks, no obvious signs of significant aging. The bridge needs maintenance and upkeep. Lighting, painting, and regular removal of debris would enhance pedestrian safety, encourage it, additionally, encourage more use of the bridge, and likely extend its life, its lifespan for years to come. Moreover, painting the bridge would encapsulate the existing lead paint and better the appearance of the bridge, which sits over the roadway frequently traveled by visitors coming from out of town. The bridge, honestly, what this has all got us talking about and excited about also, has so much potential. Some of us have talked about, if you go down into the underneath area, it could be an outdoor classroom for Arcadia, similar to the way that Woodland Forest has this whole STEM program. They could learn about the water table, there is biodiversity, there's all kinds of exciting things if people invested in doing wonderful things with it. I know that there's some graffiti under the bridge, we, you know, I myself am a local artist, there are tons of artists that could help do mosaics or, you know, actual graffiti to beautify the underside of the bridge. Love the idea of what everybody did at the River Walk with the monsters, the little monsters that are set up as a scavenger hunt. We could have those kind of things that could actually bring people to this area of town. It's a multi-generational, stable neighborhood, and it connects these two neighborhoods. So, you know, this could be something potentially that brings people to and, and could be a real attraction. So let's elevate the bridge and turn it from an eyesore to icon. And I just want to end by expressing my, you know, gratitude especially to Kip Tyner, who is my councilperson. He has spent, I cannot even tell you the amount of hours since this first, you know, was brought to our attention that it was on the agenda to be demolished. You know, Kip has interacted with me almost every night, and every time he brings an issue to me, I come back to him with a response, and we go back and forth, and I appreciate him looking, you know, voicing, you know, just having conversations with me. I also want to express a debt to the councilors who are not in my district but are voting on this and who actually responded to some of our outreach to come either walk with one of us or see the, the bridge on their own and take a look to see that it's, you know, all the things I said about the, it needs maintenance, you know, but if you walked out there and you looked, which I believe most of you have, I think that you'll agree that, you know, it needs some maintenance, it needs some housekeeping, but it is not structurally unsound, nor is there any study that, that actually suggests that. So thank you very much for your time tonight, we appreciate your consideration.
Thank you, Loretta.
Our next citizen, our next citizen is Marvin Lucas.
Mr. Lucas, if you please come up and, and we all know who you are, say your name and address though for the record, please.
Good evening, my name is Marvin Lucas, One Beechwood, Tuscaloosa, Alabama, 35404. I don't know what else I could say besides what Loretta Lynn had just said. She's brought a great presentation, but I'd like to say a couple of things. You know, the bridge was put in place when we widened 15th Street for the safety of our community to be able to cross from one side of 15th Street to the other. We talk about our city being a walkable city that's connected from side to side. In order for us to connect with the opposite side of 15th Street, we need this bridge. This bridge is important. Now I know you've talked about how expensive it is to fix it, how expensive it is to paint it, to add the lights, to add the cameras, I've talked to several of you about, and the mayor, about the things that you're thinking about doing. But just like all the projects we already do, why do we have to do it all at once? Why can't we do it in phases? You know, right now, you say it's an eyesore, I think me and Mr. Fels talked about it being an eyesore. Yes, it is. Let's start with painting. That's the first step to take it from being an eyesore. Then, as Loretta just said, if we want to work together with the council and the community, there is so much we can do as a community to help beautify it. You know, we could come up with gardens out there, we have master garden plants that could help with plants, there's so much we can do. And you talk about people not crossing it, well, one thing is, let's make it pleasant enough that somebody want to cross it. We talked, one young lady that we've been talking with, she's an artist, she's already working up sketches and art, that she could have artwork on that bridge. This could be an educational source for our children, educational source for our community. There's so much that we can do with this bridge, to take down this bridge, make it unsafe for any of our citizen children to cross 15th Street. And just like I say about our schools, people pounce on us all over and over when we let students out of school because they say a tornado coming, and they, and then they don't storm, and they say, well, you did it. But I feel like if one kid get hurt in our schools because we didn't let them out of school for a tornado, then that's detrimental, and I can't go home and sleep. If one child or one adult cross 15th Street and get injured or lose their life, I want to be able to say, I did my part to ask you all to please reconsider this, tearing this down, and make it so that we can make sure that our citizens can cross 15th Street in a safe manner, and that we don't have to go home saying, if we did not take down that bridge, that person might have not been injured, or that person might have not lost their life. I want to thank you all for your time that you've given, each of us, listening to us about everything, thank you for considering, and I understand you may consider putting it back to committee, if that's the case, then let's work together, the community and you as a city council, to come up with, what can we do to help you with this expense? What can we do to offset some of this expense? To beautify this in a way that it's something that the community loves, the city loves, and we continue to make it sure that this city is what you say on the website, a city of connectivity. That's what's on our website, say that we are walking city. Well, I can't walk across 15th Street, especially since I've had my knee surgery, if I get out there, I might get hit, okay? But I made it across that bridge yesterday. I've had a little help, but I've made it across that bridge, and that made sure that no car or truck hit me as I was crossing that bridge. Please consider in finding some kind of way that we can make sure that we keep this bridge for our citizens of Tuscaloosa. Thank you.
Thank you, Marvin.
Our last citizen is Patrick Franton.
Hi, Patrick Franton, I live at 1222 38th Avenue East in Druid Hills. And as a Druid Hills resident, I'm familiar with this bridge, I've walked across this bridge, and so when I started hearing the rumors that it was slated for discussion, I really wanted to try and understand the why behind this. And so I went back to the February 27th City Projects Meeting, which you can find on Facebook, and the discussion starts about the 13th minute in that video. When the item comes up, the Veterans Memorial Parkway Bridge Demolition Project, so the title, it was already slated for demolition, there seemed like maybe the decision had already been made, so when I looked at the money, it looked like the actual item was $200,000 for the engineering contract to figure out how to tear down the bridge, and another half million estimated for actually demolishing the bridge, so three quarters of a million dollars. So again, I assume there was a good reason to do this, right? I'm a pragmatist, and maybe there is a good reason. As I watched the video, it was initially suggested to the committee that it's got to have a lot of repairs done to it, was the reason. The mayor then said, and I quote, "The bridge is structurally still, structurally, the bridge is still in good shape." Okay, so it's not, got to be repaired, it's in good shape, the mayor tells us, and I believe Al Dot told him that. Someone then suggested, well, I thought the reason was because no one uses it, right? And some numbers have been talked about tonight, I, like others, would dispute the numbers that have been measured, but more practically, even if no one uses it, are we going to spend three quarters of a million dollars to knock down a perfectly good bridge? That doesn't seem like a good use of the taxpayers' money. A third reason was floated, after those two weren't very good. I think it's a public safety danger. Getting off over there in the woods would not be a safe place to be. Getting off over there in the woods is where you find Arcadia Elementary School. If it's not a safe place to be, right next to Arcadia Elementary School, I would expect the city council to have done something about that. So I don't believe that's a valid concern either, because I don't think you guys would neglect the schools in that way. So that was the end, and then we voted the meeting, council voted. The mayor floated a fourth reason this week in emails to constituents when he stated that he had recommended the demolition after receiving contentious complaints regarding its aesthetics. Does anyone here upset about the aesthetics? No, I don't really believe that's a problem either. So four different reasons why this bridge should be destroyed, none of them make any sense, especially at three quarters of a million dollars. I've had the opportunity to speak with many of you on the council and with the city engineer's office over the past few weeks so that you guys could hear our concerns about this slated demolition, and I really appreciate your time and your listening to us. And I hope, as many of you have walked the bridge, that you got a sense of what it is to live in our part of Tuscaloosa. You don't live in our part of Tuscaloosa because it's the shiniest and the newest, there's other parts that are made for that. People come to our part of Tuscaloosa because we want things with good bones. The houses that we lived in were built a long time ago, they're built with lumber you can't buy anymore, they're built with craftsmanship that you can't find, and they're solid homes. We also come to this side of town for deep roots, not just the deep roots of our magnolias and oaks in our neighborhoods, but the deep roots of community. To choose to live in a multi-generational space, in a diverse space, where your neighbors can be brand-new families that are just starting out with their first home, or people that are original people from this, when the neighborhood started, well before the bridge was built. We value those good bones and those deep roots, and this bridge has good bones and deep roots. Should it be maintained? Yes. Could it be improved? Yes. Should it be destroyed? I don't think so, and I have yet to hear a good reason why we should destroy it and why we should spend three quarters of a million dollars to do it. So I urge this, this council to send it back to committee, and I hope while it's in committee this time, you can talk with the citizens of those districts and ask what we would like to do with it, what do we think about the bridge, so that it can really be a part of Tuscaloosa's growth and improvement as a city. Thank you.
Thank you. That was all. Of course, I want to thank you all for being here, and this was not a public hearing, so that's why we had the comments. Of course, it's perfect because the next vote coming up is concerning the bridge. I am going to wholeheartedly make a recommendation to take this off of the table, and there will be no vote, I hope, and take this back to committee. I'm going to say I'm the first one that erred, because I felt like I haven't done my homework until, and actually, in some ways, it may be a blessing in disguise because of what may come of this, but I could have done a much better job, and I think other councilors have told me they could have, well, of not digging into more of why this was, came so quickly and was in no time looking for the bridge to be gone. I, I'm excited now to, hopefully, if we can get the votes here tonight, to move this back to committee and start over, because I certainly don't feel like it should be demolished by any, by any means. And go back to Projects Committee, it's chaired by Mr. Crowe, and hopefully, we'll look at, get to the final words from the engineers, and I've, I've done a lot of homework in the last week too, and speaking to various staff who have other, I think, great ideas, some of the very greatest ideas have come from you that are here tonight, and, and for that, I'm very grateful, and, and actually, I'm very humbled that I represent such a group of people. It makes me very proud tonight. So then hopefully, maybe, we'll find there's a reason to do those improvements, and go to the Finance Committee, that's chaired by Councilor Busby, and then go to the Public Safety Committee chaired by Councilor Howard, and, and let's, let's see what we can do to make this something great. And I believe, I personally believe that we can. So I'm going to make, I'm going to make a motion that we remove this from the agenda and take it back to the council.
Counselor Tyner, I do have to read this into the record, so if you don't mind, hang on one second. This authorizes professional services agreement with Duncan Coker Associates, PC. And Mr. Tyner, that was a motion?
Yes, I made a motion.
Second.
Can I, Mr. Tyner, if you'll clarify, so the motion is to return it to Projects Committee?
Yes.
And then, could I suggest that we let Projects decide whether to route it further to Public Safety or Finance?
Absolutely.
On the finance side, the money's currently approved, so I guess we could, I'll be glad to consider it, but the motion is to send it back to Projects?
To Projects, the committee, and?
Hopefully, President Tyner, all of the council will participate in this committee. Would be my, we have three voting members, but everybody participates.
Mr. Tyner, I'm sorry, just for clarification, further clarification, you want it back to Projects, just today, or do you want some time before?
Want some time, so we can, so we can have proper notice. I think the most important thing to me tonight, and is, is that not be a vote on demolition, to say we're going back to the committee. And when Councilor Crowe will set the date, because we do want proper notice, so that all of us here will be able to let you know when we will be having the meetings, and so you will be a part of it, a big part of it.
My recommendation then would be for this body tonight to just vote to withdraw it. Any members of this body, OCE department heads, the mayor, can all put it back on Projects when, when anyone feels it's a risk.
So I can make a motion to withdraw this from the agenda.
Second.
Maybe we have a motion and a second, voting with Councilor Lanier.
Yes.
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 And so, motion carries, and no demolition. Thank you all, can you come back next week?
Okay.
We appreciate it very much, and you're free to go unless you'd like to stay for the rest of our meeting, it's, it's, I'm sure you, you would enjoy it.
My hands off.
Well, Mike, Mike's going to put out an RFP, I think, to get some real numbers.
Yes. So we'll see outside ourselves. Okay, thank you all, we're going to move along with our meeting.
Yeah. This will authorize zoning amendment number 1520.
So moved.
Second.
Having a motion and a second. Zack?
Yes, sir. So this is a rezoning public hearing that was continued from February 20th, 2024. Do you want me to wait, or I can?
I think they're about the last ones, just about out the door, if you'll set the door behind them there. Forrest, chief.
All right. So this, when it went to Planning Commission, was Z1623, this is Mike Hicks petitioning to rezone approximately 9.5 acres located at 20225th Avenue Northeast from R2 to R4, and this is Council District Five. Here's the location of the property, an aerial showing the property, the current zoning, and the request, which is going from R2 to R4 in order to construct 26 townhome lots and four duplex lots. There was, at Planning Commission, the vote was recommended to approve by a vote of five to two, and that recommission, that recommendation was to approve with the condition that the development connect to First Street Northeast if the traffic study analysis requires connectivity as we decide.
So, we'll see how it goes. Okay, thank you all. We're going to move along with our meeting.
Yes. This will authorize zoning amendment number fifteen twenty.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion and a second. Zack?
Yes, sir. So, this is a rezoning public hearing that was continued from February twentieth, twenty twenty-four. Do you want me to wait, or I can?
I think they're about the last ones, just about out the door, and if you'll shut the door behind them, they're, of course, chief.
All right. So, this, when it went to Planning Commission, was Z sixteen twenty-three. This is Mike Hicks petitioning to rezone approximately nine point five acres located at two zero two Twenty-Fifth Avenue Northeast from R two to R four, and this is Council District Five. Here's the location of the property, an aerial showing the property, the current zoning, and the request, which is going from R two to R four in order to construct twenty-six townhome lots and four duplex lots. There was, at Planning Commission, the vote was recommended to approve by a vote of five to two, and that recomission, that recommendation was to approve with the condition that the development connect to First Street Northeast. If the traffic study analysis requires connectivity, as we discussed, and as Mr. Gardner kind of gave you more information at pre-council, that connectivity would not be required with this subdivision and with the traffic analysis that was presented, and so I know y'all wanted more clarity on that. Other than that, it does not fully conform to framework. Framework does identify this as traditional neighborhood edge, which does say connected street network, but of course, we've discussed that in length. And then, here's the future land use character map that shows this area, as well as the permitted uses in the R four zoning district.
Thank you, Zack. And I was, by the way, very happy that Fire Marshal Stein spoke with me today and said that they do not, he doesn't have any issues with requiring connectivity, and I know that, as I've spoken with Mr. Booth, and who I'm, I think this is a great project, I'm very happy with this because, you know, the, what I call Kennedy Park, which is First Street, you know, they've been a quiet little neighborhood for as many years since they've been built, and, and they were, the only drawback was the potential amount of traffic coming through, so their neighborhood, so I was very happy to hear that traffic study came back and then was endorsed by the Fire Marshal as well.
Yes, sir. Mr. Booth is here, if you have any further questions for him.
Okay. Mark, do you have anything you'd like to, to add before we vote?
Mark Booth, twelve seventeen Greensboro Avenue. No, I appreciate y'all allowed me to come up here and, and tell you how much we really want this project to be successful, and we appreciate not having to connect to the, to the neighborhood, and I think if, if I'm not mistaken, that the report was a hundred and forty pages long, so I didn't read it all. I, I think we did, and I talked with the engineer about, we didn't have a problem of a, a brake fence or whatever for our safety, if that, if it was necessary. It would be not for traffic, but if there was, for some reason, the fire truck had to come through Kennedy Park to get to this development, that they'd have the brake fence, and vice versa, if there was something happening with the railroad or something of that nature. So, whatever, you know, we would do, we were willing to work with the city on that.
I'm, I don't know who was more excited to hear that results, and then the Fire Department acted so quickly.
Be me.
Yeah, yeah, I'm, I'm close behind you, but, because I'm excited for you in this project.
Thank you.
Okay, any questions for Mr. Booth? Okay, being none, voting on the zoning amendment.
Mr. Tiner, this was a public hearing when it was introduced.
Okay. Okay, okay, all right, so this was a public hearing when introduced, as my, as our clerk pointed out to me. So, is anybody who want to speak for or against this project? Okay, thank you. Being none, voting with Counselor Howard?
Yes.
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 And motion, zoning carries. Congratulations. Look forward to it, Mark. Okay, Council Committee reports, no mayor's veto, consent agenda.
This approves items A through F on the consent agenda.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, second, voting on the consent agenda with Counselor Lanier?
Yes.
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 Consent, consent agenda carries. Clerk?
This orders demolition of the structure at twenty-eight oh four Sixteenth Street.
Okay, Virgil?
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, second.
Counsel, this is for the condemnation of twenty-eight oh four Sixteenth Street, condemned December twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Property has eleven housing code violations. This property is in the area of the West End Revitalization Program authorized by Mayor Maddox. The owner has been contacted, is aware of this hearing. The owner is aware that if it's condemned and demolished, that the cost of demolition will be charged back to the owner. I do not believe that the owners are here to represent.
Okay, this is, is the owner here? Nope. Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone here to speak for or against the demolition? Okay, being none, voting with Counselor Howard?
Yes.
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 Demolition's approved. Clerk?
This orders demolition of the structure at twelve fourteen Veterans Memorial Parkway.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, the second, Virgil?
This for the condemnation of twelve fourteen Veterans Memorial Parkway, condemned December twentieth, twenty twenty-three. This property has forty-nine housing code violations. The owner has been contacted, is aware of this hearing. The owner is aware that if it's condemned and demolished, the cost of demolition will be charged back to the owner. The owner is not here to represent, to my knowledge.
Can I vote twice? Okay, this is a public hearing. Anyone here to speak for or against? Being none, voting with Counselor Lanier?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Clerk?
The following item is not for adoption and requires two other public hearings to be held on March twenty-sixth and April ninth. This is the first of three public hearings to approve the renaming of Eighteenth Avenue East to Paramus City Avenue between Thirteenth Street East and Veterans Memorial Parkway. We do need a motion and a second to hear this public hearing.
Yes, motion, second, please.
Second.
Motion, second. Okay, this is a public hearing. Is anyone here to speak for or against this renaming? Okay, now, how, how this works, of course, there will be a, there's required three public hearings. There'll be one, another one next week, and then two weeks following that one, and then on April ninth, the council will actually vote, and the Paramus City Avenue is strictly on Eighteenth Avenue East, and it will not affect anyone else this time because Dr. Paramus City owns all that property, so just to make that clear. So, no vote, so moving on to the, no pub, no one wants to speak? Moving on to the next item, please.
This will authorize the Chief of Police to execute a memorandum of understanding with the Tuscaloosa County Sheriff's Office.
Motion, second.
Have a motion, second, voting with Counselor Howard?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Clerk?
This will approve job class specifications for various city departments.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, voting with Counselor Lanier?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Clerk?
This will authorize a permissive use agreement with Party Down LLC.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, voting with Counselor Howard?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Clerk?
This authorizes the Second Amendment to the resolution entitled Resolution Approving an Application for a Permit to Construct a Pier for Commercial Use.
So moved. Second.
Motion, second, vote with Counselor Howard?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Clerk?
This will authorize a professional services contract with Garner and Associates Engineering.
So moved.
Second.
Have motion, second, voting with Counselor Lanier?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Clerk?
This authorizes a minor public works contract with Central Alabama Asphalt and Construction Company LLC.
Motion.
Second.
Motion, second, vote with Counselor Howard?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Clerk?
This will authorize a minor public works contract with Ioxie Local Seventy-eight.
Motion.
Motion, second, voting with Counselor Howard?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Clerk?
This will authorize a disbursement from District Seven Improvements Funds.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, second, voting with Counselor Lanier?
Yes.
Yes.
Hmm.
You gonna need, you gonna need a fridge?
Yes.
Motion carries. Clerk?
This authorizes the execution of an agreement with Indian Rivers Behavioral Health.
So moved.
Have a second?
Second.
Motion, second, vote with Counselor Howard?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Clerk?
This will authorize the First Amendment to Task Order Directive Number Two to the Master Agreement with Barge Design Solutions Incorporated.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, second, voting with Counselor Lanier?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Clerk?
This authorizes the purchase of equipment, supplies, or services for the amphitheater.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, voting with Counselor Howard?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Clerk?
This authorizes the purchase of equipment, supplies, or services from C Spire.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, voting with Counselor Lanier?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Clerk?
This authorizes the purchase of equipment, supplies, or services for Fire Station Number Five.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, voting with Counselor Howard?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Ordinances and resolutions of a general nature or permanent operation or introduction.
This introduces zoning amendment number fifteen twenty-three.
So moved. Second.
Motion, second, voting with Counselor Lanier?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Clerk?
Call for unanimous consent?
Not without. Next one.
This annex is approximately one point five eight acres located at one one two oh one Watermelon Road to the corporate limits of the city of Tuscaloosa.
So moved.
Have a motion, second, voting with Counselor Howard?
Yes.
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 Yes. Call for unanimous consent?
Second.
Have a call for unanimous consent, vote with Counselor Lanier?
Yes.
He wants to get out here like me. Okay, we start, we have a yes, we have Lanier, Lanier.
Yes, it's my turn.
Yes.
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 Motion carries. I know, I got lost. Okay, clerk?
Too much.
This amends exhibits A and B of Section nineteen forty-two of the Code of Tuscaloosa.
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, voting with Counselor Howard?
Yes.
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 A call for unanimous consent?
Second.
A call for unanimous consent, vote with Counselor Lanier?
Yes.
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 Motion carries. Clerk?
This amends chapters thirteen, sixteen, and nineteen of the Code of Tuscaloosa.
So moved.
Second.
Have a motion, second, vote with Counselor Howard?[1613.26]